Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Rasheh.
Here.
Vice Chairman Hershenson.
Here.
Board Member Gambrell.
Here.
Board Member Waterhouse.
Here.
Board Member Benson.
Here.
Board Member Nguyen.
Here.
Board Member Galloway. I see Mr. Galloway is absent today.
But a quorum is...
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next order of business invocation would ask Mr. Nguyen, please to deliver his normal lovely homily.
Thank you. Let us stand, please. Father, we thank you, Lord, for a beautiful day that you've given us, and this is the day that you've made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And, Lord, we just pray your blessings on our meeting today. We pray, God, that you give us wisdom and guidance, Lord, as we look at the agenda and the items that's on it. And we're grateful that we're able to serve this beautiful city that's called Bonita Springs. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Bless. Let us remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Governor...
Baldi.
Gambrell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Thie. Gambrell, I'm sorry. I forgot your name. That's embarrassing.
You know, we all have senior moments.
Okay. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on April 16th.
I move.
Twenty twenty-four. We have a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. The minutes have been approved. Okay. As we usually do, we will hold off public comments until after the presentation by the applicant and by the city. The next item is the public hearing. We have one case today, case number two six seven three seven, McLaughlin Boulevard variance. It's a variance from an LDC section four dash one eight nine three, which requires a street setback of twenty-five feet for local roads, and they asking to allow a setback of fourteen feet for a proposed single-family home on a residential property in Bonita Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since this is a quasi judicial item, I would ask now that anyone who intends to give any testimony today, please stand and raise your right hand. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, we will first hear from the city.
Nope. Per usual. Good morning, zoning board. Mike Fegan with Community Development. Just going to give you a brief introduction, then we'll turn it over to the applicant, per usual. Yes, as you heard, this is a variance request for specifically a street setback for a single-family residential lot on McLaughlin Boulevard. It is a cul-de-sac lot. There is a little bit of a funky, unusual shape to it with some of the property lines. So it is somewhat unique in terms of its features of the lot. And these features were not created by the applicant. So it is somewhat unique in that regard. But staff is still recommending denial of the request just based on the black and white criteria that you have in front of you in terms of how you review and approve variances. But with that in mind, you know, per usual, we hear from the applicant first. They do have a brief presentation. It is Divco Homes who is representing the applicant. And they can go ahead and come on up and say their piece. And then staff will be here afterwards for a brief presentation as well, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fegan.
Just making bigger. Perfect. This is the law over here. I need one of these for my house. Perfect.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Stacy Trineski, and I am the agent for Divco and the applicant of record on behalf of Charles Roth and the lot. We have requested the variance that you all just heard about, and I will defer over to our engineer Gary Butler to give the presentation on our behalf. Thank you.
Morning. Gary Butler with Butler Engineering. I got dragged into this halfway through, so I'm kind of a newcomer. The house was built back in the early eighties, so this is that pre nineteen eighty-three condition. And regulations were different. If you look at this exhibit, I don't know if you have this at your desk or you can see it from there.
Yep.
If you look at the hard black line that I show on Lot forty, that's the proposed house itself. No staircases and other things that are exempt, but...
You can use this.
Oh, okay. A pointer?
Yes.
Now you guys are going to see how good my hands shake. I'm not seeing any...
Allow me to see if... Please go.
Okay. If you look at the hard black line on Lot forty, that is the proposed house, less the, you know, balconies and staircases are things that don't count for setbacks, or you see the actual setback that we need. If you look at the white underground, you know, what's on the ground, that's the original house that was knocked down directly after Ian came through. In fact, I think they knocked it down right away. The same family has lived there. It was subsequently deeded to the son, but the son grew up there. So this is a family that's been there since the nineties, basically. The old house was built under the old standards, where you connected the setback from each side, basically. You went twenty-five feet back, and you wind up with a line that makes no setback necessary for this house. In a similar situation with the house right across the street.
When you say across the street, that's L forty-three?
L forty-three.
Okay.
And I have blackened in the amount of that house that's in the setback. So again, the old standard didn't require a setback on cul-de-sacs to be the full twenty-five feet. Collier County is still doing it that way, but I know you guys don't want to hear what Collier County does. Lee County used to do it this way, a long time ago, before the city was incorporated.
What is that?
The amount that we're asking for is eleven feet, and that's just in the center of the lot. And Mike mentioned that this is not a conventional lot or not, it's a unique lot. I forget the exact adjective. But if you look at this lot, it's got two rear yards. That does not help, right? And if you look at what we drew on that exhibit that you see that shows the actual depth of the lot, that's on an angle. So that's not when you're going to go build a house. That's not the actual setback. So I think staff was indicating we're really only shy by one foot from the hundred-foot minimum. It's really more like ten feet, and we're asking for eleven feet of relief. The utilities are in. They're in the right-of-way. They're not in the yard. There's no front easement for utilities. So there's really no reason to have extra footage. The house will already be back ten feet from the other houses to the south, southeast. Not sure what else I would add to that. Again, it's an individual doing this because he had to knock his house down because of Ian, basically.
So currently, there is no structure on that lot?
It was knocked down two years ago. What was the question? It was only about five feet away from the right-of-way line. You could see that on the exhibit. You could see the white roof of the garage in the front of the house. It's closer to the cul-de-sac than we are.
And now you're proposing to build a house larger than the original?
Yes. All the houses in there are larger than the originals, and there are a lot of old houses. Again, this house was built in like nineteen eighty-one. I don't think you could get insurance in there in nineteen eighty-one. I'm not sure you can get insurance in there now.
I have no other questions.
Is L forty-three an existing house?
Yes. It's newer, and it's a two-story house. Our original house was a one-story house. And you could see how he had to put his house in there to fit it. He's well into the setback.
Early in your presentation, you said no setback is necessary?
Well, no, I'm talking about a flawed system, basically, okay? It used to be you connected from twenty-five foot on one lot line to twenty-five foot on the other line, you'd go straight line, and it took that bulge out of your setback. Well, this lot is so unique, if you connect those dots, it goes into the cul-de-sac. The actual line when you connect those two dots is like three feet into the cul-de-sac. So technically, he didn't need any. He probably had seven or eight, five or six, you know, it depends on where you are on the cul-de-sac. Now we're proposing a maximum encroachment on the setback of eleven feet. It was probably twenty feet before.
So you want to move that house back a little bit from the cul-de-sac? That's what you're trying to do?
Yeah, we want to, and I think we want to, and I think we have to. But I think it's built back. There's plenty of room there between the right-of-way line and our proposed face of our house.
I have one other question. Apparently, there are five criteria which must be met...
Right.
For the granting of a variance. Can you please tell us which of those... Tell us how you have met all the five criteria?
Well, we moved the house back already, okay? We have a substandard lot. And the debate would be that we have a ninety-nine-foot deep lot. It's supposed to be a hundred. That's the minimum dimension for a depth. I'm going to say in my books, we have ninety or even less for the depth of our lot. So it is a hardship lot. It doesn't provide any problems to the neighbors. Again, we're pulling the house back from where it stood originally, and that house was there for fifty years. Eighty-one, close to fifty years, forty-five years, forty-three, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has provided a detailed analysis and a staff report addressing each of the criteria as well, if you need more detail.
There is a narrative in this part of the package. I forgot to bring it with me today. It's probably something we can load on the monitors if there's a specific question you have.
And how about the other criterias? You got two. We talked...
I don't have that in front of me.
How's your neighbors? How's the neighbors in the...
I have not talked to the neighbors.
I mean, I'm just throwing this, you know, just...
They have been notified, obviously. We sent letters to them. I don't know. We have some neighbors that are in the congregation.
Part of the public hearing? I mean, comments on the...
They would like to speak.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
And I'll be available for questions after the staff's presentation, and I can answer any questions that you have or that the community has, the neighbors. Anything else?
Nope.
My cohort is more prepared than I am. It's relieving us of an unreasonable burden, okay? It will not be injurious to the neighborhood. That's C and D of the criteria. A and B is there is extraordinary conditions. Again, we have probably the most unique lot that I've ever been around, right? It's an interesting lot. It has a bunch of restrictions to it. And B, they are not the result, the exceptions or extraordinary conditions are not the result of an actions taken by the applicant. The applicant bought this house in the nineties. The house was actually built in nineteen eighty-one. So it was not something that was created by us. So we meet all those criteria.
Can you tell me what the exceptional burden this will relieve you?
The depth of the lot.
Depth of the lot is what it is?
Yes. If you have a hundred-foot lot and you have a twenty-five-foot setback and a twenty-five-foot setback, you can only build a house that's fifty-foot deep. If that goes to one-twenty, now you could build a seventy-foot deep house. If it's ten foot less, then we can only build a forty-foot wide house.
The burden is, again, what?
That we don't have the full fifty feet to build the house in, that we normally would have with a minimum lot.
You can build your house, not a house.
Yes.
To build a new house.
Right.
Or a house. You can build a house on that lot.
You can still build a house on this lot without a variance.
So...
You just can't build a full-size house.
You can't build your house? All right. That's enough.
Okay. I'll agree to disagree.
And what you're asking is one, you're asking for one more foot?
No, I'm asking for eleven feet.
Eleven feet?
Yes. Again...
Or you got ten?
I don't, we do by definition, but not in actual, if you look at that house and you look at our new house, we only have ninety feet if you're perpendicular to the rear yard.
I have a question. Exactly what is the justification when you can build that home following the current, you know, setback requirements, but the base footprint was twenty-two hundred, and now you're adding about a thousand more to that? What is the justification for doing that? In other words, knowing that you can build it following the previous footprint, more or less, and going to this larger, you're shaking your head now, so that's, can you respond while you're shaking your head? No.
Okay, first of all, we cannot build on the same footprint as the original house. That we're pulling back from the cul-de-sac. It was a few feet away from the cul-de-sac at the worst case on the old plan. So we can't just simply rebuild the house. We'd have to move it back no matter what. There was room to move the old house back. Obviously, it was a nineteen eighties house. I don't want to argue highest and best use, but this neighborhood is full of multimillion-dollar mansions at this point. So if you forced him to build a smaller house, he would be underbuilding compared to what the economy would support. That he's going to come when he has to sell that house. If it's a small house, you're going to have another owner try to knock that house down, build a bigger house. He's ready to do that today. And again, he was put out of the house by Hurricane Ian. This was a relatively low house. I think the slab's like elevation five or four. So basically, this house got inundated, as the whole neighborhood did.
And now the newer structure will all come up with codes and...
Yes.
Heights and all that kind of, you know?
Yes.
No longer...
It'll be a good addition to the neighborhood. I don't think anybody's worried about the house we're building. Any others?
Anything else? We'll hear from the city?
Thank you.
Good morning again. Mike Fegan for the record, and the keyboard disappeared. Oh, here it is. It's all good. I will do my best to not take up too much of your time and keep it brief. So just to clarify what the request is, so I think there might have been some confusion. Right now, there is a street setback requirement on McLaughlin Boulevard of twenty-five feet, and that is measured from the edge of the right-of-way line or the edge of the street easement. They are requesting a setback of fourteen feet instead of twenty-five feet. So they are wanting a setback that allows them to be eleven feet closer to the right-of-way than what the requirement would be. So the request is for an eleven-foot setback variance to allow them to have a fourteen-foot setback instead of twenty-five feet. Now, with regards to the previous house, they were absolutely correct in that it's an older home. It was built in nineteen eighty-one. The plots of land out there were actually created back in the sixties. It was an unrecorded plat, so it exists in the public record, but it was never in a plat book or anything. So the maps are quite difficult to read. They're not the clearest, going all the way back into the sixties, but we tried our best to take a look at it. And what you have here is a series of lots that have dimensions on the map. And again, it's a very odd, unique-shaped lot. It's not a square. It's not even more of a triangular shape. It's very unique because of where it sits on the cul-de-sac. So when we look at that, we look at that versus what the actual requirements are for the zoning district. And in the zoning district, they have a requirement of a lot width to be at least seventy-five feet wide, at least a hundred feet deep, and at least seventy-five hundred square feet in lot area. This lot has about a hundred and fifteen feet in width. The measurement based on the LDC, which I'll get at that in a second, is around a hundred and eighteen feet in depth, and the area is around twelve thousand six hundred thirty-five square feet. So it is a lot that tends to meet all of the zoning requirements. Where it gets a little bit funky, and this is one of the reasons why staff was... I'll say staff was trying to be very generous with the interpretation for a hardship, is the way you have to measure lot depth when you're dealing with lots that were created pre nineteen eighty-three. There's a specific way that you measure the lot depth by definition, and it has to do with drawing two straight lines from the foremost points of the side lot lines, and then you find the middle point, and you draw it straight back to the rear lot line. And when you do that, that's where you come up with the hundred and eighteen-foot measurement. The potential issue that they could raise is that when doing that, because it's on a cul-de-sac, you're essentially including a portion of the property that isn't theirs and using it for depth. So essentially, it's unusable depth because that extra footage isn't on their property. So then we go back to the original issue, which is, okay, well, I have an old plat map that shows that one side is ninety-nine feet, which is technically less than the hundred-foot minimum. So there could be potentially a hardship variance on that side since it does not meet lot depth. The kicker and somewhat the discrepancy is that that ninety-nine-foot line doesn't go all the way to the water's edge. It stops before. So there's additional length and depth beyond that ninety-nine-foot mark, and this is in your packet. It's part of the applicant survey that shows the additional depth. It's about another thirteen or fourteen feet, I think, which would then also put it over the hundred-foot depth mark. But for the sake of, again, trying to be generous with the interpretation, you have a clear platted line from the nineteen sixties plat that shows it stops at ninety-nine feet. So, okay, maybe it's a little bit less than a hundred feet. So we can sort of go down that path a little bit. But you're still going to have issues, at least from the staff standpoint, when you go through all the criteria. So the ones in green are the ones where, again, with a very generous interpretation, you can say that they meet. It is a very unique lot, okay? It was not created by the applicant. They didn't do this to themselves. So that would successfully meet criteria one and two, again, with a very generous interpretation. You're still going to have issues with criteria C and D from the staff perspective, which is, is this really the minimum variance necessary to relieve the applicant of a burden caused by this property? An eleven-foot variance would be the largest setback variance that's been approved in that area. It's quite a departure from the way we typically treat setback variances in terms of, you know, where the hardship is versus what you're asking for. So the staff perspective is that the footprint that they're asking for is just too big for the lot. The lot itself is still very much a buildable lot for a single-family home. They want a specific footprint, and the owner fell in love with a specific footprint, which I understand. But I don't think that the footprint is necessarily appropriate for the lot, given some of the uniqueness of this. And I think that's where the issue that staff was having with this stemmed from. Aside from the fact that if you look at the next criteria, criteria D, you know, will be injurious to the neighborhood and detrimental to public welfare. Well, it would set a brand-new standard for how to develop up and down that street specifically, where, you know, we have these other lots that do have to meet these setback requirements that could now come in and say, well, you gave it to my neighbor. I think I should be entitled to one as well. And I don't know if that's necessarily the path that you would want to go down with something like this. But again, it's not very reoccurring, so moving on to the last criteria. It's not reoccurring so much to the point right now that you probably need to amend the code or ordinance to change anything. But again, from the staff perspective, you do still have issues with C and D. Realistically, you probably have issues with A and B as well, but like I said, that we were being given a very generous interpretation for that side of it. And with regards to, I think they had mentioned there was another house across the street that was encroaching into the setback. Just to clarify, that house is an older house, just like this one was. The house next to it is a newer house, and it was pushed back and moved out of the twenty-five-foot setback. So all the homes are meeting that street setback on that lot as far as the newer construction homes would go. Now, with regards to the existing house that was there and then demolished, because it was part of damage sustained by Hurricane Ian, there would have been an option had they want to rebuild that exact same footprint in that exact same location, they would have been able to apply for that under the city's disaster relief ordinance, where you're allowed to put back the same square footage in the same area as part of a disaster relief protocol. So if the previous house was, in fact, encroaching into that street setback, they would have been able to put it back exactly where it was. That all goes away when you decide to build something new. You decide to build something larger, not the same footprint, which is what's being proposed. So once that happens, the conventional code kicks in, which would require the twenty-five-foot street setback, and that's where we are.
And Mike, a quick question. Now, I'm going to summarize it the way I see it. A house, not the house, but a house could be built on that lot.
Yes.
Thank you.
Michael, one other question. The minimum lot area, seventy-five hundred feet, this thing is almost double.
It has over twelve thousand square feet.
So I mean, does that not give them sufficient room to build a house?
It would be, because of the shape of the lot, it would be a unique design. But again, from the staff perspective, it's...
You know, I mean...
A house could be built, yeah.
Is there a stories limitation?
It's a thirty-five-foot height max, and you take that from your base flood elevation plus one foot. So they could build multi-stories, and that tends to be what you see up and down that street as part of the newer development homes. They build multiple stories for the additional square footage.
But a third story of living space is possible?
If, however they can design it within their thirty-five feet, they can do that. So again, the story height's going to depend on what they want to do with their interior ceiling heights and things like that. They have a thirty-five-foot height max. However many stories they want to fit in there, they can.
Has the fire department, did this get to the fire department to where they looked at the encroachment in the...
No.
Right-of-way? That's not right-of-way. Encroachment in the setback?
No.
Because the house across the street is significantly closer to the road? And it looks like a small cul-de-sac anyway.
It does look like, as far as the actual travel lane and width of the cul-de-sac itself, yeah, it's a pretty narrow cul-de-sac.
So has anybody looked at a fire truck getting in there and being able to turn around within the cul-de-sac?
I can check with the Public Works Department to see if perhaps there's something, if there's plans on the books to expand that cul-de-sac in the future or improve it. I'm actually going to be providing some residents with some contact information from Public Works. They were, I was chatting with a few of them before, and they were expressing concerns about the roadway itself. I don't want to get too off-topic here, but they were expressing concerns about the roadway itself, which are probably valid concerns that need to be heard by the city. So I'll be providing them some contact info for that.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Fegan? Okay, now we will hear from the public. Is there any public comment? Please come.
Hi, my name is Jim Smith.
Reiterate that you are under oath?
Pardon me?
You are under oath?
Yes.
And that you have approximately four minutes to make your presentation. Please proceed.
My name is Jim Smith. I'm a resident. I live across the street. I agree with everything that Mike has said. It's a unique lot, but I feel that the builder is wanting to have a large backyard. If he could take that lot, take his home and move it back about six feet, then he wouldn't be needing eleven-foot of variance. And I don't know how to work this to show you on the pictures there, but he's wanting his pool to be, oh, seven and a half feet from the seawall. He can move that pool closer to the seawall. So it's five feet away. Also, his back lanai, he has twenty-four and a half feet from the seawall. He can actually move that nineteen feet from the seawall. So he can push that house back at least five feet right now and not be asking for eleven-foot of variance. Okay? I want to make that clear. The reason I know about this, because I'm lot number L forty-five. I went through this a year and a half ago. I would love to have had a few feet here and there. And I stayed within the setbacks and so forth. And my back lanai is twenty-five, twenty feet from the seawall. My pool is five feet from the seawall, and I would have loved to come forward. One last thing I'd like to mention is L forty-three lot Bud McDonald also was built thirty to forty years ago. So I'm not even sure what kind of, you know, plating was done that long ago, and that's why his house is so close to the cul-de-sac. And one last thing is this cul-de-sac is very, very difficult for all of us residents. We would love to see it expanded out to its full size. Right now, trucks cannot get in there and do a turnaround. They got to go in and go like this to turn around in that cul-de-sac. It's horrible. Our street is way too narrow. Everybody on the street, if you want to drive up McDonald, up McLaughlin, have barriers alongside the street.
I would think there's a more appropriate forum for you to bring up these discussions.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway, thank you, and I just wanted to mention that I am in opposition to this, and I agree with what Mike says. And right away, I saw immediately they could push that big house back, and it's a big home they're putting in there.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other public comment? Okay. I'm sorry? Certainly.
I just want to address two items that got brought up that I think were a little bit not clear. Most of our lot is unbuildable for anything, okay? If you look at the tail of our lot, that was on that original diagram that goes to the northeast, that's... that's, if you see the 25-foot setback lines, it cuts off almost all of that. And the, the second thing is that this argument applies to cul-de-sacs, it does not apply to square lots.
The cul-de-sac is irrelevant. You said it's unbuildable?
The setback lines converge, the 25, it's only about 40 feet of depth in the tail of the lot, the northeast tail. It's only about 40 feet from the right-of-way line to the back corner of the lot. So 50-foot totally obliterates any ability to build farther to the northeast. We're already pushing up against our setback to the northeast.
I don't understand.
I can, if I can get this back on. Would you like to get your slides back up?
Yeah.
It's there, but it's unbuildable. If you can see this orange line, where it goes to 25-foot outside the cul-de-sac.
You know what, it would be helpful if you could point. I can't, we can't see from this angle what you're pointing.
I don't know that they've got this working.
Yeah.
They got it working, but you got to point at that one.
Where's our tech?
Where's our AV committee?
Yeah.
Where are the nerds when you need them?
There we go, we're moving.
Mr. Butler, can I see that, can I see that?
There we go.
Mike, can you X out of that box, that black box?
I know what he's saying. He says you can't build in here.
Yeah.
So... I mean, I, unless, you know, you guys are in business, you know better than I.
Right. Do we have the handheld microphone? Gary, we're going to get your handheld microphone.
Yeah, could you, yeah, in the meantime, just come up here. Sorry, we hate to say that, we just want to make sure you get on the record.
I don't know if I have a steady enough hand to do this.
Is there a handheld microphone on the lectern?
You see the orange line that is a 25-foot curve outside the cul-de-sac? That's our front yard setback by code. If you look at the orange line that goes along the seawall, 25-foot from the seawall, both along the first side of that rear lot line and then the second side of that lot line, it's also 25 feet. If you can see, those lines converge, they basically converge at the mid, at the center point of the cul-de-sac. So you can't build on a large portion of that square footage. It is a big lot, but you cannot build anything on a large portion of that.
But you're talking about that, that triangular or whatever shape it is delineated by those yellow lines?
Right, right.
And what, what's the area of that?
It's very small, I don't know what the actual square footage is.
Then what, and what you're, I'm sorry, okay, I heard you, okay.
The main thing I wanted to clarify was that this does not apply to non-cul-de-sac lots. If I have a square lot, there's no reason for relief. Cul-de-sac lots have notoriously been a problem through thick and through thin. The, the analysis that I do shows that that house can fit on that lot in its current place and will not be in a setback. Again, that's using an old Lee County standard and a current Collier County standard. I mean, you can have this problem with the lot across the street when it comes in, I can assure you. The one that's on the cul-de-sac, not the one that's down the road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. No other public comments, no other rebuttal? Okay. I want to say something as chairman. I am not persuaded, I personally am not persuaded, that the applicant has met all of the requirements for the granting of a variance, and I would like that to go on the record, is my opinion. Right now, I would call for a motion to either approve or disapprove the application. Mr., Dr. Hirschen, will make a motion.
I'd like to move denial of this request for a variance from LDC Section 4-1893, which requires a street setback of 25 for local roads to allow a setback of 14 feet.
All in favor?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second a motion, all in favor?
Should we do a roll call, a roll call vote?
Oh, you want to do a roll call? What's, what's the vote, what's the... The vote is to deny.
Board member Gabriel?
Deny.
Board member Waterhouse?
Deny.
Board member Benson?
Deny.
Chairman Raschel?
Deny.
Vice Chairman Hirschen?
Deny.
Board member Winn?
Motion, the application is denied. Now, for the business, the meeting is... What's happening? Oh, the case update. Can we hear the case update? Please, I'm sorry, I terminated the meeting early, I keep forgetting that, I mean, it just...
Your agenda, huh?
I am not an agenda person. Who will deliver that? Michael, you'll tell us about that previous thing. This is the thing on that, yeah, the River Ben thing?
Yes, it goes to first reading of city council tomorrow, so we'll, we'll know more, more tomorrow.
Thank you.
There's your update.
Listen, do me a favor, in future, just put on the agenda those things for what you will deliver a report. Can you do that?
You don't want to hear from me more?
Oh, why, we'd love to hear from you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're going radio.
I'm sorry, my opinion is if you don't meet these requirements, you don't get the thing. I mean, it's the same thing with that, I still go back to that, still in school. What the, you have to change.
Sir, the meeting is still in session. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.